Good evening, Mount Vernon. Happy Valentine's Day for all who celebrate. Today is February fourteenth, twenty twenty four, and welcome to the Mount Vernon City Council Public Meeting. First and foremost, we're gonna do a little housekeeping. Can everybody please silence your cell phones? Also, in this room, we have an exit to the rear of the room, to your right, my left. You have an exit to the front of the room, your right, my left. Lady's bathroom is right outside the front of this room. Men's is down the hallway by the main staircase. There is an emergency exit to the right of the exit of this room, down the staircase. In case of emergency, proceed out of the room to your right. As you exit, there is the stairwell there and in the center by the men's bathroom. One addition I also want to let everybody know is that we do have an AED machine, which is artificial defibrillator, outside by the planning department doors and by the main stairs. With that being said, I ask that Councilwoman Danielle Brown lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right now, we will have the public speaking session and our speakers. I have been advised to advise you that you have three minutes to speak and then one additional minute when we will stop you. So our first speaker of the evening is Mr. Kenneth Miller, Kingsbridge Gardens. Okay, if you don't mind, come stand at the podium, state your name and your address. Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Miller. Live at forty-four St. Paul's Place, Mount Vernon, in the Kingsbridge Gardens section of Mount Vernon. A couple of issues I'd just like to bring to your attention. For the last couple of years, if they do it again this year, it'll be the third year. Can you hear me now? Okay, um, if it happens again this year, it'll be the third year that we having problem with music being played down on Edison Avenue, Dock Street and Edison Avenue. Um, they usually congregate around eleven, twelve o'clock, and sometimes it goes until three, four in the morning. Mount Vernon Police is doing the best they can do. Usually when we call, they, uh, the crowd is dispersed. But lately, they've been starting back up in, you know, about an hour or so. But my concern is, why don't these people understand that what they're doing is illegal and they cannot be there? You know, I know Mount Vernon Police is tired of us calling, but it's very annoying. This is like three years now, and it's loud. It's so loud, I thought it was my neighbor playing the music. And then another issue that's coming along, this just happened this summer, they're renting out Brushfield, giving out permits, and they're holding like block parties. And on Saturday, it's mostly Sunday afternoon from anywhere from three to four PM till like nine o'clock. Now, I'm three, four blocks away, and I can't even sit in my living room and enjoy a peaceful afternoon without hearing all this music. So, um, those are the two things I would like addressed because it's, uh, the quality of life right now in that area is is ridiculous. I mean, you know, it's like I'm coming home from work and I hate for it to be a nice day because I know what I got to look forward to that evening. So I'd just like, um, whatever you, uh, powers you have to, for that to be addressed, I like that to be, um, you know, taken into consideration because it's really, it's really annoying. You know, and I'm, I'm in law enforcement and I have to be up early. And four o'clock in the morning, they're still back there playing music. And I went back there Labor Day, and it was so thick back there, I couldn't really drive through the car. I got up out of my bed at three in the morning, I went back there. Came home, called the police, but I'll later, they said there was a shooting back there. This was Labor Day. I talked to Lieutenant or Captain Camarino. So it's just really getting bad, and it's like lawlessness back there. So I don't understand why they're allowed to continue to come back once they're totally. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, Mr. Miller, we usually address everybody after all the speakers are completed, and I should have said that at the beginning, okay? So I think we only have one other speaker, so if you sit down, we'll address that as soon as he's finished. Mr. Jeff Monroe?
Good evening, Council and staff. Good evening, community. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Monroe. I would like to, um, well, my formal reason for being here tonight is to stand in solidarity with the people of Palestine and the more than fifty and counting municipalities in the United States calling for a ceasefire in Israel. I will, um, read an article really just to articulate better than I could the, um, all this, all the spirit and the, in some ways, the text, what I, what I'd like to say. So, uh, this article is by Patrick Lawrence, um, an independent journalist. And it, and it says, uh, his, his quote is as follows, "It has been evident to many of us since the genocide in Gaza began October seventh, that Israel risked, risked asking too too much of those inclined to take its side. The Zionist state would ask that many people cannot give. It would ask them to surrender their consciousness, their idea of moral order, altogether their native decency, as it murders, starves, and disperses a population of two point three million while making their land uninhabitable. The Israelis took this task and they have lost. We are now able to watch videos of Israeli soldiers celebrating as they murder Palestinian mothers and children, as they dance and sing while detonating entire neighborhoods. And they mock, as, as they mock Palestinians in a carnival of racist depravity, one would have thought beyond what, what is worse in humanity, and certainly beyond what any Jew would do to another human being." The Israeli newspaper, Harretts, reports, as American media do not, that the, that the Israel Defense Forces covertly sponsor a social media, this, a social media channel disseminating this degenerate material in the cause of maintaining maximum hatred. It is a psychologically diseased nation that boasts, as it inflicts this suffering on the other, that it, that obsesses it. The world is invited, the world is invited, the ultimate, the ultimate imperversity to this, to partake of, partake, to partake of Israel's sickness, and it said in a Hague courtroom two weeks ago, quote, "No," unquote. "Post Gaza apartheid Israel is unlikely ever to recover what, what place it enjoyed, merited or otherwise, in the community of nations. It stands among the pariahs now. The Biden regime took this risk too, and it has also lost. In support for the Israelis' daily brutalities comes at great political cost at home and abroad, and is tearing America apart, its universities, its courts, its legislators, legislatures, its communities." And I would say that pride, and I would say what pride it still manages to take in itself. When history of, when history of America's decline as a hegemonic power is written, the Gaza crisis is certain to figure as a significant marker in the nation's descent into a morass of immorality that has already contributed to a collapse of its credibility. This statement and, uh, the full article is called, um, Crisis at the New York Times, and it's really actually an excoriating kind of critique of the New York Times itself as, um, journalists within the Times and its management fight over how to properly serve the public and feed, feed the, uh, the proper narrative, not just the truth, but the state narrative and the Israeli narrative of this genocide. To me, this is a, an, an indication that we live in a moment where, uh, significant history is being made. And, um, I'm asking this council to mark its moral compass in that moment, to signify, not for any practical reason, but at least for strictly symbolic reasons, as we do stomach all kinds of symbolic things that this community does in legislate, in, in legislator, in legislative and official acts, we ask that this ceasefire be called upon in resolution by this city council. Thank you very much.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna start with our Public Safety Chair, Epputti.
Thank you, Council President, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Miller and Mr. Monroe for coming in, uh, tonight. It's really cold outside, so you could be anywhere tonight, so we're grateful that you're here. And as my, uh, council member Derek Thompson often says, um, us, us council members can't, can't be everywhere. Uh, so it is important when you come in and then tell us what's happening in different parts of the city. I was just busy texting, uh, Commissioner Gibson, uh, the police commissioner about your issue. Uh, so we will follow up. I would humbly ask if you could, uh, stay in contact with our aide, Antoinette, she's right there, um, give her your information, um, and please follow up with her on, um, on the issue. Um, if the commissioner, I'm hopeful the commissioner will have an answer as to what's happening on Edison Street and what the follow-up is, but let's stay in touch. Um, you know, it, it's, uh, you own a home for a reason, not to have a bad quality of life, right? Uh, so we take that seriously. So I will follow up with Antoinette and the commissioner and make sure that there's some resolve to your, to your issue. Mr. Monroe, uh, always a pleasure to see you. Jeff, thank you for coming in. Obviously, as a city council, we have no jurisdiction over what's happening over, overseas. It's a complicated issue, and I just pray that there's resolution there quickly. Um, both Israelis and Palestinians have suffered a great deal over the past, uh, five to six months. Um, so hopefully, you know, all that conflict can work itself out quickly, um, so that there's no more, uh, no more murder that's happening out there. So, but thank you for coming in and thank you for giving us your comments. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brown?
Um, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out. Uh, Mr. Miller, it looks like, uh, Councilman Potteet, who's the Chair of the Public Safety over police, will take care of the issue. Um, if I can help in any way, you can feel free to contact me. Um, email address is dbrownfordaniellebrown@cmvny.com. Um, but I'm sure between Antoinette and, uh, Councilman Potteet, they'll be able to either get a directed patrol or something over in your area to, uh, stop the, um, the congregation and loud music. Um, in addition, Councilman Potteet, if you're able to, uh, talk with Recreation, um, about the permitting and the loud music, that'd be helpful as well. Um, yeah. And, uh, Mr. Monroe, thank you for coming out. Um, I, I believe your ask is that we pass a resolution, so I will take it into consideration and do a little bit additional research on my end. Um, and ultimately, it'll come up to what the body of the council wants to do, um, so we would move, move forward accordingly. Thank you.
Councilman Boxel?
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you all for coming out. Uh, Mr. Miller, as my, um, fellow councilman said, we, we take quality of life issues very seriously and the, the council will follow up and, and see that something's done about that issue. Mr. Monroe, thank you for coming. I'm very passionate about what you, what you spoke about. It's, it's an important, it's an important issue and it's, um, sometime, it's sad to see what's going on on the TV screen sometimes. Uh, and I too wish that no other man, woman, or child would perish in this conflict, so we, we're, thank you for, you know, presenting, and we will do our research and follow up with you. So that's all my comments tonight.
Um, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here tonight. I think your issue is very important. Um, I just had a few questions, so if you could come stand at the podium. A majority of this is happening on the weekends, or is it every night of the week?
Well, like I said, it's, this will be the third year. They used to just do it on, make, it depend on the weather, but it's like Thursday definitely through Sunday night. Um, they start at eleven o'clock, and sometimes it goes to four in the morning. Now, Mount Vernon Police has been doing a pretty good job of making them stop, but some nights, they're very busy, especially in the summer, and there's been nights, I mean, times that it's, it's going on till four in the morning. Like I said, I'm in law enforcement, I'm up at four, it's hard to go to sleep. And it was so loud, I, I was thinking it was my next door neighbor. That's how loud it is.
And it's on a public street. It's not in a private block, correct?
Edison, you know where that little drawbridge is? Well, I think the first place you can make a left when you're coming into Mount Vernon, oh, that's Edison Avenue, but they're all the way back down there near the concrete company.
Okay.
And like Free World, they're just out there, babies in little.
Yeah, because if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's cut off then, right there.
It's a dead end block. If you go down Dock Street, then make the right, they all wear it, and at that cement company. Me and my wife have gotten out of bed at two, three in the morning because like, when we first, like, where's this music coming from? We found out where. And the reason I get out, because when I call the cops, I have to have a location, that's exactly where they are. So I have to verify that, and it's ridiculous.
Well, I think that, um, Councilman Potteet and what Councilwoman, uh, Brown said is that we definitely have to take into consideration applications that come to Recreation that go to a certain hour of the day, so that it doesn't disrupt the residents around there when it pertains to Brush Park.
Okay.
Okay, when it pertains to Brush Park, and, um, I believe Councilman Potteet will handle it with the, uh, Police Department, but again, email us, right? So all our emails are on cmvny.com. Okay, so if you have a situation, even in the mix of it, send the email, okay, so that we can forward it off, uh, to the Police Department in, in that regard, okay? Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, thank you for being here. Thank you for always bringing topics that may sometimes be unpopular or maybe popular, right? I think what's going on, uh, over the seas is just, it's, it's just horrible. Um, but like Councilwoman Brown said, we'll do our research and see what the, uh, body of the council likes, would like to do to go forward. But again, thank you for being such a great advocate. We appreciate it. Uh, with that being said, we are gonna go into our referrals session. And we are going to start off with, hold on. All right. Okay, tally sheet. All right, ready? We are going to start with Legislation and Public Works, Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have item number one, which was Management Services, um, and ordinance authorizing the allocation of funds for hiring web developers in the Department of Management Services. That item was held because the legislation wasn't required. Um, item number two, I have an ordinance authorizing the city council to adopt the city-owned vehicles policy. That item was held because it, there needs to be amendments made to it. Item number three was an ordinance authorizing the mayor and one design and one designated staffer to attend the fifty-third Annual New York State Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Legislative Conference. That item is on the agenda. Item number, uh, I don't know what number this is, an ordinance authorizing the co-sponsorship of it, of an Earth Day slash Arbor Day Celebration Event with Comrie Enterprises on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, from, uh, twelve PM to three PM at Hartley Park. The rain date will be Sunday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve PM to three PM. That is on the agenda. Have an item, um, uh, an amendment to an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the, uh, US Department of Housing and Urban Renewal, HUD, um, accepting a community funding grant for one point five million dollars for Sewer Outfall Twenty-four, Sewer System Cleaning Investigation and Sewer System Rehabilitation Phase One. That item is being, uh, called for, the, yeah, the item is being called for. Um, I have an ordinance amending ordinance number two, adopted by the city council on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, entitled an amendment, amending amendment number thirteen, adopted on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to accept grant funds for capital improvement projects throughout the city. That item is being called for. Um, I have an ordinance amending ordinance number five, adopted by the city council on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, entitled an ordinance requesting permission for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the US Housing and Urban Development HUD and accept a community funding grant in the amount of one point five million for projects entitled Outfall Twenty-four, Sewer System Cleaning and Investigation and Sewer System Rehabilitation Phase One. Um, for, um, Mount Vernon Sewer System Rehabilitation, that's on the agenda. I have item, um, I have an ordinance authorizing the, the Department of Public Works to release a request for qualification for MWBE general contractors. That's on the agenda. I have an amendment to the New York State EFC grant for five hundred thousand dollars for Arcatis and one million dollar sewer grant that is being called for. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number four, adopted by the city council on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to amend the original Arcatis of New York Inc. agreement for an additional one million dollars that's being called for. I have an amendment to an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the US Department of Housing and Urban Renewal HUD accepting a community funding grant that is on, for one point five million dollars. That's on the agenda. I have an ordinance authorizing the co-sponsorship of the Antigua and Barbuda International Cultural Association, um, International Food Festival to take place May twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. That's on the agenda. I have an ordinance authorizing Councilman Potteet's attendance at the fifty-third New York State Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Legislative Conference. That's on the agenda. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number eight, adopted by the city council on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, entitled and an, an ordinance authorizing the request for vital records, Management Services. That is on the agenda. And I have one add-on, um, which is an amendment to the legislation, number three, from July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, pertaining to establishing WMBE goals. That is on the agenda. That completes my report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I have, um, a question. Uh, actually, it's for the clerk. I do not see, I had asked, um, a few times last night to make sure that the agenda for, um, the mayor's trip and Councilman Potteet's um, trip to, to the, uh, Black Puerto Rican and Asian, uh, caucus, that that be added so that the public could see, and I don't see that that was added.
I confirmed with the, um, Executive Administrative Assistant that it was added. I did not check myself from the website, but I was taking her word for it, that she added it to the website.
Okay, no problem. It could be that I'm just not seeing it. All right. Moving on, we have Human Resources and Councilman Potteet, the co-chair, please.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, item number one from the Youth Bureau will be on the agenda, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into an agreement with the Westchester Putnam Workforce Development Board. The Youth Bureau was, uh, was awarded a grant in the, uh, amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to serve twenty-five youth ages fourteen through twenty. Youth Bureau have, has partnered with Snug, MVPD, Water Department, DPW, Recreation, uh, MVS, sorry, MVCSD, OEM, and approximately two private companies to execute the program goals.
Uh, just one correction, that's item number sixteen, not item number one, although on our tally sheet, the numbers are not there. So it kinda helps to have the I legislate up, just so, so you know.
Got it. Thank you, Council President. I am number seventeen from the Youth Bureau and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Community Mental Health for opioid prevention programs and permission to receive an award in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred eleven dollars to provide the community with preventive messaging about the use of opioids. Collaboration will be with the Police Department, MVSCD, and other agencies within Mount Vernon. I am number eighteen, will also be on the agenda from the Youth Bureau, and ordinance authorizing the Youth Bureau to dispose of an unused printer. Uh, item number nineteen from the Youth Bureau is on the agenda, and ordinance authorizing a one-year leave of absence for Carolyn Treasure. Item number twenty from the Youth Bureau and ordinance authorizing participation in the Ready for Life SUNY College Tour, tour. Uh, and that's all I have for Human Resources, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Public Safety and Codes?
That would be me. Uh, I am number twenty-one from the Department of Buildings, and ordinance authorizing the controller to defund a stipend item and the transfer of funds to fund the position of First Deputy Commissioner within the Department of Buildings will be on the agenda. I have number twenty-two will also be on the agenda. Amendment to the salary of the First Deputy Commissioner. I am number twenty-three from Consumer Protection. It's for information purposes only, the January twenty twenty-four monthly report. I am number twenty-five from OEM, request for transfer of department budget line funds to correct a negative twenty twenty-three balance. I am number twenty-six from the Fire D, the Department, and ordinance authorizing the acceptance of grant funding for emergency lifesaving equipment uh, to accept DASNY state funds, CREST funds. I am number twenty-seven from the Fire Department and ordinance, and ordinance, and ordinance establishing a new fire EMS operations analyst position. I am number twenty-eight from the Fire Department and ordinance authorizing the purchase of firefighter personal protective E, E equipment, PPE. I am number twenty-nine from the mayor's office. A resolution for the authorization of speed camera legislation will be called for. Uh, item number thirty from Public Safety, uh, that will be held, and ordinance authorizing the temporary closure of Roosevelt Square. I have number thirty-one from Public Safety will be on the agenda, and ordinance authorizing one member of service to attend a warrants and affidavits writing course from February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. I am number thirty-two, will also be on the agenda from Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing three members of service to, uh, attend the Consensual Encounters Training Course, also on February eighth, twenty twenty-four. I am number thirty-five, hope I'm not losing count, from Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing three members of service to attend the Contraband Concealment Course, C three, on March third, twenty twenty-four. I am number thirty-five from Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing one member of service to uh, attend the Basic Juvenile Police Officers Training, Westchester County Police Academy. Uh, that will be April eighth through April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. I am number thirty-six from Public Safety, and ordinance authorizing and directing the controller to make payments to Tyler Technologies will be on the agenda. Says here's on the agenda. Okay, no problem. Um, clarification, that will be held on the floor when we go into the agenda, or is that held on the floor now? So we'll hold item number thirty-six on the floor. I am number thirty-seven from Public Safety, and an ordinance authorizing, uh, attendance of one member of service at the Master Instruction Evaluator At the master instruction evaluator course will be on the agenda. I am number thirty-eight from Public Safety and ordinance authorizing the purchase of twelve life pack CR2 defibrillators. Will be on the agenda. Item number thirty-nine from Public Safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor. To enter into an agreement with the Westchester County. Uh, for ten parking spaces. At lot four on South Second Avenue will be on the agenda and I am number forty. From Public Safety and ordinance authorizing two members of service to uh, ten. Uh, transformational leadership training will be on the agenda and that's all I have, Council President.
Uh, thank you. We'll ask questions once we uh, go over the agenda. Finance and planning. Councilman Boxel.
Um, the Controller's Office in ordinance authorizing a refund to KNS Real Estate Management Incorporated for overpayment of city taxes. That's on the agenda. From the controller again, an ordinance authorizing the implementation of Roth IRA payroll deduction option. That's on the agenda. Uh, Mayor's Office and ordinance authorizing an amendment of the twenty twenty-four salaries and transfer of funds. From the contingent fund. Count code A one nine nine zero point four nine three to vary salary lines to cover the adjustments. That's also on the agenda and from planning. An ordinance authorizing the planning commissioner to travel to Minneapolis, Minnesota. To attend the American Planning Association National Conference. Um, that's April twelfth to the seventeenth. That's on the agenda.
Okeydoke, and there are no more add-ons, so can we go for a roll call? Thank you, Council President. Uh, roll call, uh, Councilman Boxel.
Are we here?
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Potite.
Here.
Uh, Councilman Thompson is absent. Council President Gleason.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum. Okay, let's get into our meeting agenda. Did I do that right? Legislation and Public Works, Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Boxer, I gotta tell you, it's rough being new and being the first one up every time. It happened to me the first year, so. All right, um, item number one, um, on the agenda have an ordinance authorizing the mayor. And one designated staffer staffer to attend the fifty-third annual New York State Black Puerto Rican Hispanic and Asian. Legislative Conference in Albany from February fifteenth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo. Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of an emergency trailer um. At a total cost of thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars, um, so moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, uh, Councilwoman Brown, were all your uh, questions answered regarding the uh, emergency trailer? Are you satisfied?
Yeah, everything was answered. Uh, I said on the record yesterday, I was able to get from Commissioner Bush. The extent of the damage to the current trailer. Um, so there's uh, rodent infestation. There is uh, HVAC system that's gone bad. So there's several things which make it inhabitable. And uh, people are unable to work through the trailer.
Okay, thank you. Roll call. Oh, any other questions? Okay, roll call. Councilman Boxo. Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the co-sponsorship of an Earth Day slash Arbor Day Celebration Event with Clomry Enterprises. Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four from twelve PM to three PM at Hartley Park. The range date is April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four from twelve PM to three PM, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
Did my co-chair ditch me?
Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency. And accept federal community funding grant for sewer rehabilitation projects, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Um, I have an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to release a request for qualification for MWBE general contractor, so moved.
On the question?
Um, I just have a comment. Um, I know we're trying to get out of here, but I just want to let Commissioner Bush know and. Uh, that I'm so, so proud of this uh, RFP. Um, and so, so proud of the work that he's doing in general. Um, but hearing the call that it's important to have MWBE's bid on work that's in Mount Vernon. And just for five seconds, um, they are not having this conversation in Bronxville. They are not having this conversation in Tuckahoe or in Eastchester. Because they don't care. So it's crucial that a black and brown city like Mount Vernon does have this conversation. We make sure that MWBE's uh, benefit from the work that we're doing. Thank you, Council President.
Just one point of clarification, if I can, Council.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
RFQ, so there's no projects to bid on. It's just requesting your qualifications for the different um, fields of work. So just so for people who are interested, you can submit your qualifications.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Have an ordinance authorizing the co-sponsorship of the Antigua and Barbuda International Cultural Association International Food Festival, so moved.
Uh, second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
I have an ordinance authorizing Councilman Potite's attendance at the fifty-third um, New York State Black Puerto Rican Hispanic and Asian Legislative Conference. So moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson, uh, I'm sorry. Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I have an ordinance amending ordinance number eight adopted by the city council on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Entitled an ordinance authorizing the request for vital record, records management services, so moved.
Uh, second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Finished with.
I, I have an add-on.
Yep.
Um, my add-on is I have an ordinance amending ordinance number three. Adopted by the Ca- City Council on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three entitled an ordinance requesting permission to establish. Minority and woman business enterprise goals and minority workforce petition participation goals, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, on the question, just for a point of clarity, there is no change being made to the MWBE legislation that we uh. Uh, attempted to pass in July of twenty twenty-three. Um, there was an error in the ordinance that we actually signed off on, didn't have the full legislation, so this is just a correction of that.
Any other questions? Um, I just want to take a moment uh, to thank Councilwoman Brown for all your hard work. In uh, writing up that resolution because I think it's very important here in the city of Mount Vernon. Moving on, can we have a roll call, please? Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason. Absolutely, aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to. Human Resources.
Thank you, Council President. Number ten and ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into an agreement. With the Westchester Putnam Workforce Development Board, so moved.
Uh, second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I am number eleven and ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into an agreement with the Westchester County D. Department of Community Health, Community Mental Health for opioid prevention pro- programs. And accept an award, award in the amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. No matching is required for this grant, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I am number twelve and ordinance authorizing the Youth Bureau to to dispose of an unused printer, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
I do have one, just really quick question. This is for corp counsel. Um, why is this coming to city council? Just curious.
So it is in the charter that in order to dispose of any property belonging to the city. It must be approved by city council.
Thank you.
Uh, just a point of reference, last night, um, I also had asked to make sure that um. Management Services was consulted in the disposal of this because I think it's really important that we coordinate with him before. Um, we just put referrals letters in because maybe we might be novices at the equipment that we're um, using. But um, it had, it was confirmed that it was his idea to uh, put the referral letter in and to rid the uh, the printer. So with that being said, any other questions? Okay, roll call. Councilman Boxo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I am number thirteen and ordinance authorizing a one-year leave of absence for Carolyn Treasure, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, we were waiting on guidance from the Law Department around this um, about whether or not the the temporary hire was possible. I didn't hear any word back.
I did not either.
No, she sent us an email earlier, so. So I guess we're trying to figure out if, so you're saying that it's a temporary hire cannot happen in this position?
So.
To a mic, please, sorry.
If someone holds the position and is permanent in a position, you can't hire someone to do that position. In that line is my understanding. Um, you would use some other line, maybe like uh, temporary services or something like that. You know, but I'm not even sure if it's a question of legality more so than an accounting thing. So we may want to also hear from the comptroller's perspective, you know? Cause this is expenditure of funds, right? So if somebody is in the position. You can transfer it into the outside, you know, consultant, so you could pay for somebody. I don't know what the plans are, so.
Man, my man, um, so what's before us now is the leave of absence and not um, the placement of another uh, job. So as much as I understand, I think it would help if our Youth Bureau Director would uh, come up and speak at the podium.
Good afternoon, council members. Um, so I believe the question is, um, can you please repeat the questions, cause?
Yeah, so uh, one of the questions last night was whether or not. Uh, the question was around why the leave of absence is being granted and what we're going to do with that position if it's going to be blocked off from anyone hiring. So per your email, we understand that you're looking to hire temporarily. Uh, so what we were trying to figure out is if it's legal to hire temporarily in that line, right? Um, and it sounds like the legal determination is no, that no, we cannot hire. So is this leave of absence in that line, right? Is that, is this, is this leave of absence still required? Or what is the plan, given that it's not legal to hire temporarily in that specific line?
Well, based on the conversation that I have with civil service and HR, it is legal. It has been done before within the city in three different department recently, Recreation, um, DPW. And so the letter that I used was the same template that was used in those two department. And so um, double-checked in my homework and it is there. In addition, it's a civil service position and it's in the budget voted and approved for twenty twenty-four. So these are two CSA um, full-time position and they are fully funded and in the city budget.
So, uh, uh, um, Executive Director, can you tell us what damage does it do? Can we hold this and have the legal department do, get back to us on it? Um, so two things you, both of you said is conflicting, right? If two more weeks with this damage, anything happening in the department?
No, she, she's placed in there provisionally, cause you know, that position is to hire kids that um. One of which that was just read that we received that quarter million dollars to do that program, so um. It's kind of limbo, so if we're in limbo of putting her in the current position as a youth employment coordinator. My previous coordinator resigned, so if we don't move on this, we will have two empty position. Um, my assistant youth service aide on an annual basis served three hundred youth. And if we sleep on this as well, my um, winter after school program, in addition to that quarter mill. We're talking about an additional forty youth just for two months, so. If we sleep on it, that will be uh.
Your answer is yes, it will cause damage if we.
Yes, it will cause damage if we sleep on this.
Okay, so uh, Councilwoman Brown, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so, hold on one sec. So Director, just so we're clear, you're moving one employee. To the um, employment position.
Correct.
Okay. In taking that leave of absence, you're actually not supposed to fill the position that she's leaving. Now, I understand what you said, that they've done it in other departments.
Yes.
Okay, um, is there an additional position in your budget that is not filled that could potentially?
No, that only, that only um, position that is not filled is the one that she's coming out of. Which is the Assistant Youth Service Coordinator.
Okay, so go ahead, Councilwoman Brown.
Well, I think the part that um, like we're missing is that uh. Civil Service and Executive Director Burrell believes that we can fill this position provisionally and not temp- like permanently.
That's what I was told.
Yeah, that's the part that's in limbo. That's where we don't have clarity on.
So. I don't know if it would be this body that will ask that question, what made the Youth Bureau different from the previous other department that who have done this.
Um, I can't tell you that uh, there's anything unique about the Youth Bureau. What I can tell you is that we're trying to gain clarity on moving forward. We've asked this question in the past. And we're trying to just gain clarity so that we can move forward accordingly.
And there have been situations where we did not approve leave of absences, so I think. No way. Listen, it's, I don't know what you guys want to do. It's up to the uh, the council. You want to, go ahead.
So like, like the council's confused and, you know, I've had conversations and got pushback before from civil service. On putting people in positions that were funded and putting people there temporarily and have been told. Well, no, you have to hire them as a temporary worker. I don't think it, when we're talking in terms of leave. I don't think it, when we're talking in terms of legality, I I I don't think it is illegal to do it. The pushback we, I have often been familiar with is Civil Service saying, no, they're in, they're protected in that position and you can't put anybody. So if Civil Service doesn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
With all due respect, I'm really trying to protect the director because I want to make sure that if she puts this employee into this position, that she'll still be able to get another person. I would hate for our director to put that person in a position and then be like, oh, wow, I can't hire another. And then where is she supposed to be, right? So I I think that, you know, it's the pleasure of the board how we want to move forward. I think that.
Not that personally interested.
I am.
Invested in it in that way, so I, you know, it's.
Well, I need you to be personally invested in it because you're the Corporation Council.
No, I, I, yeah, I under- I understand. I I I understand that and and I I I gave the out, right? And you you said, and you raised a very good issue, right? Because it may change and then there may may be an issue later. So in terms of the legality of it, I think that's I think we're on solid ground, but if you put a person in the position and then Civil Service, who is the authority on this area, says that you can't hire somebody, the next time around, she may have a problem to your point.
So here's my next uh point of contention here. Oh, okay.
So the.
Go ahead.
You're moving the person into another position and the only reason why you're having the leave of absence is because the person has rights to go back to this position.
Correct.
If whatever doesn't work out. So that position has to be temporary, right?
Correct.
Has not.
They they are both tested position and so um everyone that's in that position are told up on hiring or switching, whichever one we want to look at it, that is tested position that abides by the city um council law. So when the test is called, if they take the test based on their result, if they're not passed, I believe they have thirty days to evict that position. And so that's where the leave of absence come into place for the person who's switching. If she takes the Youth Employment Service Coordinator test, does not pass.
Fail the test, then she.
She goes back to her original, because technically she is a civil servant underneath the one that she's.
And then what happens to the person that's in the?
The other person who is being interviewed, um, it was called, it was announced, those individual are made aware that that position and that's the stipulation. And if they want to take the job temporarily, that's written also for them to understand. That's the thing. They too will have to be taking a test after the first person takes a test. So it's the Civil Service rules, regulation. I don't say I like it. I do have issues too with people even grant-funded taking tests, but hey, that's for another day.
So, just one second, just one second. I want to recognize Councilman Potteet, then I'd like to say something, then Ralston will um end it with you. Go ahead.
Council President, so in terms of protecting the Youth Bureau, I don't understand why, I just don't get it, why they couldn't hire the second person if they're looking to do that. I don't, I don't, I don't understand what the issue is.
Because that position is protected by CSA, that she gets to keep that position. And and a leave of absence is really, the way a leave of absence works here in the city of Mount Vernon, if you take a leave of absence and it's granted by by the Director, the Commissioner, it's really to further your career within the other position, should you have to go back to it. They should be related in some way, which this is, right? My, my thing is this, if we move forward on this today, we can always rescind if the answers uh we don't get, or I I don't know. Ralston, now you.
Question is whether or not this leave of absence is legal. Is that the correct question, right?
No. The question is, what happens? Are they allowed to hire into that position provisionally? Um, if this legal leave of absence is granted, right? There's no clarity around that.
So the question, the question then is whether or not you are allowed to hire provisionally within the position that there's a leave of absence for. Can we come back to it? And I, can we, can we skip this and then come back to it, please?
Like, um.
I I'm I'm searching the charter to see if anything.
It it it's likely a civil service.
Civil, this is civil service.
I I've I've seen the same, this, I'd like Debbie was, I'm sorry, Director Burrell was saying, um, this is something common I've seen in the city before and we do the same thing at the county. If you, if you get a promotion to from budget to work in the Police Department as their director, they're going to fill your spot knowing that if you take that job provisionally and you fail the test, you still have rights to your per- your last permanent position. So this is commonplace throughout. I've seen this all the time.
So no benefits get paid at the same time?
What do you mean?
Like, so.
So we, they they want to take a leave, so they want to take leave of absence. You just take the job provisionally, but if you fail the test, you still have rights to go back to your last permanent position. So.
I mean, so it had happened before. I think you and Executive Director Burrell are correct that it's happened in the past. I I think what we were looking for is exact guidance uh from the Law Department to let us know if it's feasible, eh, what the parameters are and some research to be done around those civil service laws, right, to make sure that we're not stepping foul. But um if the body wants to move it forward, um, we, uh, I'm willing.
The 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 risk is the person who is taking the job, knowing that they can get bounced if it doesn't work out with the.
Right, which um is told and we have conversation with the HR Director, um Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner for HR, that that is something upon interviewing the individual that has to be mentioned, which we um in the process already interviewing and have been mentioned to the in participant or the candidate. Um, so yes, that was their stipulation that we must say that, that the stipulation that we're discussing right now have to be mentioned to the potential person who were willing to take that position, yes.
So just, just one other question, when is the test going to be given? When is this person going to take the test?
It has to be given bef- before the um the year is up, before the twelve months, before the LOA expired. So that's the civil service, yes, civil service um deals that part. They call the test state on the state level.
And we don't know when the test is going to be?
No, but it has to be before the um, the LOA, the leave of absence expires.
And so I I think that I get it now, this is a timing issue. So let's say, for example, the, that the test was the last week of February. This wouldn't.
Meaning this February.
Right, literally within a couple of weeks.
Uh huh.
This wouldn't be an issue because she would take the test. We would figure out if she would pass or fail and then you would hire the other person March first.
No, because those tests take a long time.
It takes like around three months to get the results, technically on average, just knowing that and um a lot of my staff are, well, I have six staff are uh civil service and test takers. And so usually it takes anywhere from two to three months to get your result back from the state. And so, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so um I will, I I'm willing to move it forward. It's the chair, every, everybody's in agreement? Okay, uh, so roll call.
Okay, Councilman Boxo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown.
Hi.
Councilman Potteet.
Hi.
Council President Gleason.
Hi.
Okay.
Moving on.
I am number fourteen, permission and ordinance authorize the patient in the Ready for Life SUNY College Tour. Uh, participation of nine staff members and forty youth from March twenty-fifth to March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. So moved.
So, who committee is this? Um, that's not me. Oh, yes, second.
It is you. Roll call, uh, on the question, sorry. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown.
Hi.
Councilman Potteet.
Hi.
Council President Gleason.
Hi.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, Councilman Potteet, Public Safety and Code.
Thank you, Council President. I am number fifteen, and ordinance authorizing the comptroller to defund a stipend item and the transfer of funds to fund the position of First Deputy Commissioner within the Department of Buildings. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown.
Hi.
Councilman Potteet.
Hi.
Council President Gleason.
Hi.
I am number sixteen, and ordinance authorizing the comptroller to defund a stipend item and the transfer of funds to fund the position. I apologize, is fifteen a repeat of sixteen? Am I missing something?
No, one is a salary amendment and one is a transfer of funds.
Appreciate it. Um, I am number sixteen, and and ordinance authorizing the comptroller to defund a stipend item and the transfer of funds to fund the position of First Deputy Commissioner within the Department of Buildings. Five thousand dollars available in budget code A three-six-two-zero dot one-zero-one. Salaries and wages, so, so moved.
Second.
On a question?
Just to clarify, uh, the funds are coming from um the Zombie Home Coordinator. I did speak to the mayor about this and her plan is roughly to have uh someone else that deal be to take over that, that uh responsibility.
Okay, um, so that leads me to a question. Does anybody else have a question?
I'll let you shoot first. I have one based on that comment.
Yeah, so we're taking money from the zombie zombie home coordinator and putting it into the First Deputy, which I have no problem with.
Right.
Right? It's, what was it, five thousand dollars? Um, so are we filling? We're filling that position with another person? We're just giving that responsibility over to somebody else? Oh, okay, so then we can make a resolution to rescind the zombie home coordinator then.
The zombie home coordinator fu- quit.
No, I know. So, so they're going to give the responsibilities over to somebody who's already employed?
Right.
Okay, so then we can rescind that uh resolution. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Brown.
I I guess out of curiosity, why do we need the zombie home coordinator? We could have just given the responsibility to someone else in the Building Department.
I'm not sure, um.
I can't hear the question. This is Heidi Momak.
You always on at DC Mamak?
Sure.
Uh, recognize uh Deputy Commissioner Mamak.
Heidi Momak, the First Deputy Commissioner of Building Department. The zombie home coordinator responsibilities are different than building inspector, housing inspector, and court enforcement employees. Um, zombie home coordinator is focused on specific properties that needs immediate attention. That's why we need to keep the position available.
Well, according to, okay, I'll let you shoot. It's your.
I I appreciate it, uh, Councilman Brown. So, um, the conversation I had with the mayor, and again, you know, everyone's busy, was that the position was not going to be filled. Right? That it was funded by ARPA funds and the reason why we can reallocate five thousand dollars away from that position is that it's not going to be filled. So.
Yes, uh, from the staff is going to take over the responsibility.
So DC, my my original question was, so if we can have staff take over the responsibility, why did we even create the position?
Um, I can definitely get further information from my commissioner because I wasn't part of the creating the position. Um, the position was created for the zombie properties that needs to be demolished, which we did four of those last year.
And are are there no more zombie properties?
There are. There are, and um for uh someone from the staff is gonna take over that responsibility temporarily. And I have to get further information for the future reference.
So, um, I would recommend that we hold this on the floor. Um, if that's the case, because it's different from what I heard, but bigger than that, um, zombie homes are a big issue, right? So council should understand um the plan to take care of zombie homes going forward, uh, whether we need a new coordinator because there's so many homes, whether we don't, and maybe it was wasteful that we had one. Um, but again, having that answer, I think is important. So I would recommend that we hold this on the floor.
Okay, so I I I I disagree, hold on, because I think we're getting too far he- here, okay? Um, I think that that conversation should ha- happened at the last where we transfer the funds. So I think that's really going to be up to the Commissioner and a further conversation because there seems to be disparity on what's going to happen going forward. So if the Commissioner has requested for the, this transfer to be done, we've already approved that transfer. Now we're, we're putting it onto the First Deputy Commissioner's position. You could vote yea or nay, iron or iron no. Um, but that's really a further conversation, I think, uh, our PSC uh Chair has to have with the Commissioner going forward because there's definitely a disparity here.
Right, right, but we should have that answer before we vote on this. And bigger than that, we should have a.
We already voted on it. That's what I'm trying to tell you. You already took the money out of, out of the zombie home coordinator salary. So where's it going?
Right, but let's say we need a new zombie home coordinator. We just had uh DC Malik say.
Okay, but how much money was taken out? Did you, did you look at the amount of money that was taken out?
Five thousand dollars.
Okay, and how mu- do you, uh, do you have the budget up from last year of what the uh salary was? It's more than five thousand dollars. So five thousand dollars is not that much of a hit and somebody, that that's up to the mayor. Okay, she'll have to offer that position at a lower salary. If that position remains.
So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, it's up to you.
Because I, that I, that I do want to understand what's happening with zombie homes. Um, and it doesn't sound like, at least I don't understand, right? So um, I would like to understand what the plan is going forward for zombie homes.
Right, to be clear though, with all due respect, that conversation should have happened at the previous, on the previous uh legislation. But moving forward, um, can I have a roll call, please?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
By, um, the, what's the current salary for the, the Commissioner?
The First Deputy?
The First Deputy.
The First Deputy is one oh five, I believe. Hold on. One, hold on, I have it up, hold on. First Deputy is one oh five.
I al- I also see.
I, the salary resolutions have been made. I'm just going by the budget. Okay, so if you, you have the updated number?
Well, the First Deputy is on. Can't we just ask her what the current salary is?
DC Mamak? Deputy Commissioner Mamak, are you still there?
Yes.
So, um, Councilman Boxo had a question regarding, uh, what is your current salary?
With the latest increase, um, it's hundred fifteen.
No, without the increase.
Um, it's one oh five.
Right, one oh five.
Okay.
Okay, are we, are we comfortable going to a vote?
I I mean, I am. Uh, so I, I think we need, so the Chair asked to hold it. So it either needs to be voted out of the committee and I'm in favor of voting out of the committee. You're the second member in the committee, so we should probably acknowledge whether or not you want to bring it out of committee and then we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it out of committee. All right, and we're going to go for a roll call.
Councilman Boxo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown.
Hi.
Councilman Potteet.
No.
Council President Gleason.
Hi.
Okay, so we have three ayes, one nay, and one absent. This doesn't pass. We're going to have to go for a second vote of three.
No problem, so that'll go on the next agenda or a special? Okay, moving on.
I am number seventeen, and ordinance authorizing the comptroller to defund a stipend item and the transfer of funds from the education line, budget line to the office expense budget line. So, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown.
Hi.
Councilman Potteet.
Hi.
Council President Gleason.
Hi.
I am number eighteen, and ordinance authorizing the acceptance of grant funding for emergency lifesaving equipment to accept DASNY state funds in the uh amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand two, two hundred dollars from Crest. So moved. One hundred seventy-three thousand two.
Two hundred seventy-three, I haven't memorized.
Oh, I, so that there's a typo here.
There's typo. Can we make sure that the legislation is not, is accurate? Please.
The legislation says one seventy-three, so it needs to be corrected on the floor.
It's got to be corrected on the floor.
So I I moved to uh correct. So I I move to uh correct the um amount, the grant amount to two seventy-three. Thousand um so moved.
Second.
On the question? This is uh we're voting to change it.
On the floor.
On the floor. Okay, roll call for the change.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi, and now we need a motion to approve the acceptance of that?
I would like to make a motion. Well, I'll just I'll just reread it. And ordinance authorizing the acceptance of grant funding for emergency lifesaving equipment. To accept DASNY state funds in the uh amount of. Two hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars from Crest. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Uh, I just wanted to make a public thank you to Senator Bailey because he worked with uh Mount Vernon Fire Department. And the city council to make sure that um we could get this lifesaving equipment. It's uh not only is it um turnout gear, structural fire boots, but it's also AED machines. It's also gas meters, it's demolition saws, it's chainsaws, it's very small equipment. That the firefighters show up on the fire scenes and do not have uh functioning equipment. It's also repelling systems that are very necessary and expired. Um, after a certain amount of years, so so does their turnout gear. So this is actually a sustainable thing that Senator Bailey helped the city of Mount Vernon with, and I think it's really important. Uh, to mention that because it took about eight. Eight to nine months to um. Get this whole list together and work with the state on it. So I just wanted to say a public thank you to Senator Jamal Bailey. Roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi, I just wanna say that two seventy-three needs to be edited twice on that legislation, Councilman Potteed.
Do we need another motion for that?
No.
That contains a roll call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, we're. Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. And Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
I am number nineteen and ordinance establishing a new fire EMS operations analyst position. Fifty-six thousand nine hundred nine hundred thirty thirty. So so moved.
Second.
On the question?
So on the question, uh, we had the commissioner come in and talk about this position yesterday. I just wanna note that this is for fire EMS operations analyst. We currently do not have EMS. And we've been asking for over a year for numbers on whether or not the city should stand up an EMS in the city. Um, so I just wanna put on the record, moving forward, I will not be voting in favor of anything EMS until we get the information. Um, so that we know whether or not it's adequate for our city. Um, so giving a heads up.
Okay, Commissioner, um, would you like to say a few words? Oh, I thought you were calling her up.
No.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem. Anybody else with any questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Abstention, I don't have enough information.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
No. Moving on?
Uh, one second please. We have two ayes, one nay, and one abstention. The legislation does not pass.
I am number twenty and ordinance authorizing the purchase of firefighter protective equipment PPE. In the amount of sixty-eight thousand twenty-seven dollars allocated from the ARPA. Um, under budget code H three four one zero dot two zero three. Dot C nine two nine, so moved.
So move second. I'm a little slow today, sorry guys.
Thanks, Coach.
On the question?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
I am number twenty-one and.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I would like to uh make a motion to take items number twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-nine as a block vote. They are all for training. Um. I move.
Second.
Okay, this is on the motion to um block those all as one block.
Twenty-one through twenty-six.
To take all those.
It is. Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-six and twenty-nine.
Point of clarification, does it still have to be read?
Yes, each one has to be read, but as one.
No problem.
So we're gonna take the roll call to take it as a block vote.
Great, I am number twenty-one.
No, no, no.
Council President has called for a roll call.
Apologies.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, taking the items mentioned as a block vote. Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
I am number twenty-one and ordinance authorizing one member of service to uh attend a warrants and affidavit writing course. I am number twenty-two and ordinance authorizing three members of service to uh attend the consensual. And counters training course. I am number twenty-three and ordinance authorizing the Department of Public. Safety. Sorry, and and ordinance authorizing three members of service to attend the. Contraband concealment course C three. I am number twenty-five and ordinance authorizing one member of service to attend. The basic juvenile police officers. Training. Program. I am number twenty-six and ordinance authorizing attendance of one. Member of service at the master instructor. E evaluator course. And I am number twenty-nine and ordinance authorizing two members of service to uh attend. The transformational leadership training program. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
I am number twenty-five and and ordinance authorizing and directing the controller to make payment. To Tyler Tech Technologies that will be held on the floor. Item number twenty-seven and ordinance authorizing the purchase of twelve LifePak CR2 defibrillators. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'm number twenty-eight and and ordinance authorizing the mayor to retroactively enter into an agreement. With Westchester County. Uh, for ten parking spaces lot for. South Second Avenue, so moved.
So second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
And Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it for public safety quotes. There is no add-ons for that. Moving on to finance and planning, Councilman Boxel.
From the Control Office and ordinance authorizing a refund to KNS Real Estate Management Corporation for. Overpayment of city taxes, so moved.
Second.
Um, yeah, you could fill in for Derek.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Council President Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council Pres-. Council President.
Hi.
That's okay.
Council President. Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
And Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you. All right.
Um, thirty-one and ordinance authorizing the implementation of Roth IRA payroll deduction option, so moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I just think that this is a a great addition to the city. And I wanted to compliment the uh comptroller and his staff on working on this. Roll call.
Good point.
Just just on the question? We have uh traditional IRA payroll payroll deductions here? This said in addition to traditional Roth IRA IRAs.
Says implementation of Roth IRA. Are you looking at the actual legislation?
Legislation and a referral letter said it was in addition to the. All right, it's not meant to hold this up. We could talk about it later. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
From the mayor's office and ordinance authorizing and amendment of the twenty twenty-four salaries. And transfer of funds from the contingent fund A one. Nine nine zero point four nine three to vary salary to cover the adjustments. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Abstaining.
Okay. And Council President Gleason?
Hi, but I don't think it passes, correct?
No, we're gonna have to have another vote.
Okay.
So here's so here's the question. If this isn't passed, the earlier transfer, does that now? Is it still? One oh five or is it one fifteen?
So her salary still remains one oh five, so that money is out there.
But the transfer of five thousand, it doesn't bring it to one twenty as the the legislation stated. That's why I was asking how much is her current salary? Right? It said this legislation says. The new salary of a hundred and twenty.
Right, so. Council President.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think the confusion uh DC came in and said her salary when she said initially. The board of estimates pass salary resolutions adjusting salaries, so I believe that adjustment is what brought her to one fifteen.
Okay.
Um. This, the five thousand that is gonna pass, I guess at a next meeting, will bring her to one twenty. This, these funds that that we just voted on is going to transfer um to the accounts.
Just to pay the uh the the uh resolution that's already been adopted.
Yeah, well, it's gonna to all the resolutions that have already been adopted, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so that did not pass? One abstention and uh three ayes, correct, clerk? Okay, moving on?
Thirty-two, yes. All right. Moving on?
Yes, please.
Thirty-three, planning department and ordinance authorizing the planning commissioner to travel to. Minneapolis and Minnesota to attend the American Planning Association. National Conference that's from April twelfth to the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Okay.
On the question? Um, clerk, again, I just wanna make sure that um this, if it hasn't been posted or if it didn't work properly. That this uh make sure you get uh it on the website. And. Uh, anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, go right ahead.
So. Public hearing regarding. Salary uh changes? What's uh can I can I get a little explanation and what's the next step with that?
Explain, what do you mean by public hearing regarding salary change?
It was presented that there's gonna be some um changes, which which is part of this resolution.
This is separate.
All right, so but we got an email saying that.
Right, that that doesn't have to do with um the one that we just passed. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay.
Okay, so the one that we just passed is what we had done at the uh board estimate and contract. Two weeks ago?
So this is a a transfer, yes.
I totally get that, I totally get that. I just wanted to get some clarification. What's the next step?
For these salaries?
No. For well, they're part of it, right? They're elected officials. They're listed.
So there's no, there's nothing else needed. If once the transfer here is passed. The salary resolutions already took place. This is has nothing to do with um elected officials or anything. This is only for. The appointees, their salaries, salary resolutions have already taken place.
Okay.
For us to pass legislation for elected officials, we would need a local law and that hasn't taken place.
Totally get that. They are they are listed on this 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 document, though.
Uh, let me, give me just two seconds. I gotta go back.
So but this isn't an approval of their salary.
I. Got you the first time.
Okay, so I'm confused about your question.
Saying that they're they are listed on this document. They're listed on this document.
That's only if it were to pass.
All right.
Maybe I'm just not understanding. They are listed on this document so that the money that the money goes over, but it might not pass the public hearing for the elected official.
My only question was, what's the next step with the public hearing? That was my original question.
The public hearing comes after the seven days that the local law is on our desk, right? So it will it will come after that.
Yeah, that was that was, I guess that's the answer. So what happens with the public hearing?
Okay, I'm sorry.
That was it.
Okay, all right, moving on.
I have a question about that. When is the local law gonna be presented to council?
It was presented to you via email.
Right, but it's not on this agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda. It gets presented to you. Okay, so either it gets mailed to you within um it gets mailed. Brian, maybe you want to guide me on this? Ten days? If it's mail, seven days by by email or them uh handing it to you, which is what they did yesterday?
Got it.
Okay, but I can totally understand because this is the first time we're all doing this, right? So it's it's understandable, which we had spoken to um. Corporation council about last night, which you're you're gonna send us that whole. Uh, process and procedure, right? Which we had um Councilman Boxel and I had asked about that. Right.
Yeah, I missed it.
Okay, so are we good?
I'm.
To move forward? Okay. All right, so um. Oh, gosh, where are we now? Okay, so that was uh thirty-two, we're on to.
No, we did thirty-three.
We did thirty-three and we're gonna make sure that um. His agenda is posted. Did we vote on thirty-three? We did. We didn't vote. Okay, so can I have a roll call, please?
Hi. Councilman Boxel?
Hi.
Councilwoman Brown?
Hi.
Councilman Potteed?
Hi.
Council President Gleason?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said. Um, does anybody have anything else that they would like to add? I know I do, but um anybody? Would anybody like to say anything? Go ahead.
Uh, just briefly, uh, this is Black History Month, so please uh Mount Mount Vernon, if you um. Uh, definitely be mindful uh of the month that we're in. Uh, and if you can find a place to celebrate or. Uh, be thoughtful about Black History, please, please do. Thank you, Councilman.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Okay, um, you guys are good? Okay, I just wanted to say that uh Mount Vernon lost one of our DPW uh workers. Uh, his name was Kiss uh Chris Pyrulie. And I would just like to end the meeting with an uh. Motion of silence uh in his memory. He was a hard worker with uh DPW. His services are December seventeenth. And. I'm not, I'm sorry. February seventeenth, forgive me. This Saturday at Sinatra Funeral Home. And I'm trying to bring it up now. Um, I probably should have been better prepared when I said that, right? Okay. See. Okay. Okay. Okay, it is his celebration of life for Chris P. Pyrulie Senior. It will be at Sinatra Funeral Home, four ninety-nine Yonkers Avenue, Yonkers, New York, on Saturday, February seventeenth from one to four PM. Um I'd also like to wish um a happy birthday to our councilman, uh Derek Thompson, who is not here today. And uh with that being said, if we could all stand for a moment of silence, thank you. We gotta do the roll call now? Okay, so sorry, made a mistake. Roll call. Oh well, motion to adjourn. Anybody?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potteed?
Aye.
Council President Gleason?
Aye, and if we could all stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mount Vernon, for tuning in. And we will see you at our next public work session. Thank you.